What a great group. I wish I could say the live stream was started yet.
I'm sorry, I'm trying. It's doing its thing.
Just to bring you up to date, we have been in session already. Conduct interviews were in recess from that. And at this point, when we're ready to start, we'll come out of that recess and I will lead us in the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, we are back in the session. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, if you would record the following vote that was taken during recess. The vote was made by Counselor McHugh and was seconded by Counselor Falembeski. That motion was to hire both candidates that were presented to us for consideration. And that was candidate Nicole Marion and candidate Benjamin. That name, sir.
Good afternoon. You can do a misplace like last. Signal.
Can you read?
Signal.
Thank you. And the vote, and the vote was three to zero to hire. All right. It is our pleasure this evening to listen to a presentation on the tennis court preliminary engineering cost options. I understand that the recreation committee has had an opportunity for some preview and discussion of this. Look forward to hearing from the contractor with respect to what we need to hear.
Do you want to announce that we're not doing those other interviews?
I would be happy to do that. In the agenda that you have received, an indication was made there of a 5:45 PM interview set. We decided not to do that based upon the availability of the candidates. We had two that were not able to attend as well as the status of the council. It's our intention to interview as soon as we can assemble four or more of the counselors in order to conduct those interviews. Yes, sir, please.
Members of the council, good evening. My name is Jonathan Charford, Activa Talks. I'm an associate of the State Department of Technology. We may engage by the town in tennis court projects. So this evening, we have a presentation. I'm like, we have a copy we have as a draft. We will update this presentation in a little bit. We dropped a number of questions that we received prior to this. We can trust a lot of questions within the presentation itself. By all means, if there's any questions from the council, why we know, I just want to try to answer them in real time.
Thank you.
Alright, so this presentation is broken out into three parts. The first part, we'll talk about the existing conditions. So the investigation we've got on the courts themselves, the review of the existing documents. For what we gleaned from what some of the potential issues might be of the courts itself. We'll talk a little bit as part two, the general renovation options of what we think we could do and to accomplish getting to test courts that look appropriately. And then three, we're talking a little bit about the cost analysis of the different. Alright, so we'll start off with the existing conditions review. So as most Canadian are probably aware, there's several cracks through the tennis courts and also a little bit of settlement. So of some of these pictures, the picture on the left is a longitudinal crack which can be typical for asphalt courts. Essentially when asphalt is paved, it's paved in rows with seams. So this is a typical seam you would see over the lifespan of the asphalt. Hopefully, it's a little bit longer than the first few years, but it gets not uncommon to eventually see this type of crack where it's located on the initial ground. Obviously, a lot of the other cracking that's occurred on the courts is a little uncommon as early as we've seen some cracking for these courts. So as you know, on the left-hand side, the longitudinal cracks that a lot of those are related to cracks along the seams. Another type of crack on asphalt courts is spider cracking. Essentially, this is the type of cracking that can be the result of some issues of the material underneath. Some movements, some settlement, spider cracks and stuff. And on the far right, strip cracking, that's something that happens a little more on the surface. That's typically more related to the type and quality of the asphalt. Usually, you'll see that a little bit earlier in the lifespan of the asphalt versus spider cracking or longitudinal cracking that happened a little bit later in the life of the asphalt.
The 1500, 150 feet that you have, do you have a breakdown of what cracking you saw?
I don't, we, we went through, I think we saw a little bit of all of them. So we basically went through and measured all the cracks so we could put that into our cost analysis. So that first option we'll talk about, which is the minimal repair, which I don't think confronted the break in anything based on the results and the review we have. And then one of the other failures we saw was birdbacking. So to explain what that is, essentially, an area that holds water after a rain event made about an hour or so afterwards. And after most of the court is drained, this is the depth of about 1/16 of an inch, which probably we say we can put a nickel in that puddle and it's submerged. That's a bird bath that's over the corners and should be addressed. Typically, when asphalt courts are paved and we have bird baths, they're able to fill in those bird baths with acrylic sand compound before they've been surfacing. So this could be a result of maybe some of the birdbacking that wasn't addressed before surfacing or birdbacking that occurred through the life of the court based on the base material. We'll talk about that. So as far as our investigation, we did a number of geoprobes. We did nine geoprobes. The locations were shown on the left-hand side, so essentially around the perimeter of the courts and one directly in the middle of the two courts. Those investigations went about 10 to 15 people to the frame. Essentially, what we're looking for there is a term of non-inconsistent depth of asphalt. Base material is underneath, also looking at what levels ground wire are to see if that's contributing to some of the issues. Those investigations occur on November 13. So this chart here gives a summary of the results of those geoprobes. So what you see on the far left, geoprobes, one, two, three, four, and so on, are the locations. So on average, the asphalt depth was about 2.4 inches throughout all the investigations. There's about a six-inch layer of crushed stone directly underneath the existing asphalt. And then there's a fill layer that you can see, even though on average it's about 21 to 22 inches, it varies in depth from, you know, about eight inches, 80, 10 inches, all the way to about 3.4 feet. So that filler layer varies significantly throughout the profile of the field. And then the glacial tilt that's directly on below the fill there, that then goes to about 15 feet, if not more, below finish grade. So one or two things to note here, that the fill layer, as I said, is fairly inconsistent. And it's hard to understand from looking at documents if that was a layer that was built as part of the project or potentially the previous contractor that stripped out the, you know, set the fill layer to a certain grade and then just went up with six inches of stone and the asphalt on top. The other thing to note is regionally in this area, frost is about 40 inches below finish grade. And what we were able to see through this investigation is the glacial tilt does get within 40 inches of the finish grade. And that's important to note because of the type of material we have related to the susceptibility of frost. So the crushed stone underneath the existing asphalt, it's an open grated stone. Essentially, what that means is if water gets into that stone, it can pass freely through that stone. The fill layer underneath that crushed stone is a poorly graded sand, which again, thinking about water, if that enters into that material, that will freely move horizontally and horizontally. The glacial tilt that's underneath the fill layer, it has silvery sands and high fines, which essentially means if water does get down to that glacial tilt layer, it's going to have a hard time moving. It's either going to get stuck between the fill and glacial tilt or if it does get through that glacial tilt, it's going to take a long time for that water to get through. And we did investigate the groundwater depth and during those investigations in November, we were getting groundwater about seven feet to 12 people of finish grade. So considering we had a lot of rain this past year, you know, obviously, annual groundwater levels can change throughout the year. But that's, you know, with the amount of water we did receive, where those levels are, we're of the opinion that the groundwater is not one of the issues caused to center for these sports. What's important to note is where we do have frost 40 inches below finish grade, that glacial tilt layer does go within that layer. And as we talked about stormwater a little bit, there's going to be some potential of hurricane trapped in that glacial tilt and susceptible to frost. So taking a little, a look at the original design for the pavement profile, there was about a, for, for the courts themselves, a three-inch layer of asphalt that was specified. The crushed stone layer was to be about 12 inches. And then there's a six-inch layer of grain or fill underneath that. So from a design standpoint, we think this detail is appropriate, especially with the glacial tilt. You know, a 12-inch layer of compacted aggregate that isn't open grated is appropriate. So maybe the material put down wasn't appropriate, but the depth of 12 inches, we do see is appropriate depth versus the six-inch dots that is there. So it's shy about half that profile. And then having a six-inch layer of the grain or fill between that crushed stone and the glacial tilt is an appropriate detail. So from a design perspective, we think the detail itself was appropriate for the condition where it. So aside from the material underneath the courts, we want to take a look at the surrounding areas as well. Just understanding the material underneath the asphalt essentially is porous and water can move through it. And, you know, the baseball field to the east has a pretty decent amount of space in the outfield that pitches toward the tennis courts. And essentially, there's range of the tennis courts that then has the water move elsewhere either around or north. So move on to the next slide that blows this up a little bit. So as you can see with the arrows from the east side, that field is, the outfield, a good portion of the outfield is pitching. And essentially, all of surface water is coming toward the tennis courts. In yellow, there is two area drains are meant to collect all that stormwater. However, my gut tells me if water is not hitting that direct line into the area drain, it's potentially bypassing those area drains and moving toward the tennis courts. So water from the baseball field is shedding over the asphalt walkway and then intersecting the French drain that's located between the asphalt walkway adjacent to the baseball field and the tennis court. And I assumed that was in place and meant so that any water that passed those area drains goes into that infiltration trench. You know, either infiltrates into the groundwater or enters that pipe that goes to the north into that detention area. So based on that analysis, there's a few items that we think are causes of the failure. And honestly, it's probably a combination of a few things. So one is potentially the quality of the asphalt itself that started to crack a lot sooner than it should have. And the, the second potential cause is the material underneath the existing asphalt that's susceptible to freezing thawing. So talking a little bit about the asphalt, over the last 10 years or so, the quality of asphalt has degraded. One of, one of the causes we're seeing is the allowance of reclaimed asphalt pavement to be put into asphalt. So essentially, DOTs will allow, you know, 10, 15% of recycled products to go on this asphalt. And obviously, you know, depending on what's in that recycled product, that degrades the strength and quality of the asphalt itself. That is, you know, potentially a cause of some of the premature cracking. And obviously, once asphalt starts cracking, you can sort of keep up with it a little bit with crack repairs. But essentially, once it goes to enough freeze and thaw cycles, you never can get the cracks to disappear unless you're doing sort of full renovation. So potentially, the recycled asphalt pavement is a potential cause. And then just without knowing enough about the existing asphalt, quality of the asphalt may be part of the issue where it was going to start to crack. This is the levels of asphalt and different materials. And then the second potential failure is the stormwater management I discussed a slide or two ago. So based on the fact that the material underneath the asphalt is porous, we have a pretty decent amount of water coming from that baseball field going toward the tennis courts. Now, you can see in this image, this was a picture that was taken in November when we did the investigations. And you can see that the French drain is barely visible. So over time, you know, as the lawns been mowed and, you know, potentially, you know, the French drain has been maintained, water's going to have a harder time getting down into that stone. So as we get along these hard rain events, which unfortunately are starting to come to norm the last few years, water from that baseball field is shedding and getting directly on the courts. So if the asphalt was failing early and we were starting to see cracking in the asphalt, as that water is getting on the court, it's allowing areas for water to then get underneath the asphalt, get into that stone material. And potentially, as we have freeze thaw cycles, that material underneath will heave and that exacerbates some of the cracking you may already have in the asphalt. Another potential issue is as that French drain was working early on, as water is getting into that French drain, that water isn't meant to infiltrate. But instead of going vertically, if it was allowed to move horizontally, get into underneath the tennis court where that material is free flowing, that's a potential cause for the water to get underneath the court. So it could be a combination of asphalt starting to crack either because of water getting underneath the surface and heaving or cracking occurring and allowing water to get underneath. But essentially, a combination of the poor asphalt, the base underneath, and the water getting to the course seems to be part of the issues that are occurring on these courts right now. So based on all that information, there's a few generally clear renovation options we can consider. So the simplest renovation option is to do some crack repair and resurface. I think based on everything I just discussed, that's not a viable option, even though it's the most cost effective. It's probably putting, you know, good money into a bad situation that you're going to be feeling the impact. So even though that's the simplest option, I don't think that's something that's going to address the issues correctly and really shouldn't be considered. And we do see, just talked to this for a moment, you know, typically, you know, if asphalt's going to start cracking, need a renovation eight to 10 years down the road and the cracking source occurring where we source see along the seams, some of this crack work repair could occur. But considering it's an eight-year old facility and we're already have done a lot of, I think this, this would be a good recommendation to the town to use as a renovation. A second option that we also won't consider, we'd like to share the options in reality, is a full report fiberglass sheet repair. So essentially, when you do have some cracking underneath, it comes on top with a fiberglass type surface on top. It's, you know, essentially sort of covering and in a mending place that the crack repaired. This is a technique that's fairly new and we have no experience with our office. So, you know, this is something we're probably not going to recommend, but something in the marketplace at least just to know as an option. I think with everything we know, the next two options probably one's been made for us. And so the first thing we want to look at is how we're going to, sort of the base material. Because, you know, from our understanding, you know, the, the base does have structure. So option one, which you see in the picture here, would be to reclaim the existing asphalt and blend it with the crushed stone and the fill with the barrel underneath. So we get a, we all mentioned mix of homogeneous, compatible material, which mixing the fill material will help fill in some of the voids of the crust film that's torn off and make a compatible material that hold the water while passing through, trying to pack that to a 95% compaction. If that wasn't a viable option, there were strong concerns of the material isn't appropriate because based on the, the proposed design, what's there, they don't match and they don't match the style, particularly what you show. We could look as an option number two, to take all of that material, scoop out about 18 inches of it and then come in with a whole new lift of the appropriate amount of material, which would be the six-inch granular fill, the 12 inches of compact stone, and then your three inches of asphalt. If we did asphalt, I think option one or two are both viable options. If we do think about post-tension, because post-tension concrete is essentially a structural slab that's meant to work on poor soils, we could allow option one, reclaiming that material in place because it did have a little bit of settlement. That structural slab is built so that if there's minor settlement, it doesn't crack over time. That's, it's one solid slab that would deflect because asphalt's a porous, flexible pavement. So the material underneath, as it goes up and down, the asphalt's going to move with it versus the post-tension can handle that flex during the rest of the cycles. And then really, if you think from a surface standpoint, the decision of going back with asphalt or post-tension concrete slab really becomes a question of maintenance and budget. I think if we're able to address the base issues that we're seeing here, we do think asphalt is viable option with the understanding that, you know, asphalt these days does have an eight to 10-year life cycle protection. You may be looking at repairing, you know, every 10, 12 years. Where a post-tension concrete slab has a 25-year warranty and we expect that slab to last much longer than 25 years. And again, the picture in the middle or to the, the left image shows the cable now occurring in the post-tension slabs from the concrete support. Basically, that's, you know, the bar that is then going to be tensioned so it doesn't allow winter freeze and thaw for that concrete to slip and crack. The concrete does sustain and contract, just like regular concrete does, but the, the tensioning in that concrete will allow it not to crack over. And I think it is imperative, no matter what we do with the base material, you know, to finish surface. I think addressing some of the drainage issues will be important. So again, you know, looking at the fact that a lot of water, stormwater, from that baseball field, whether we use a French drain or that can permeate liner so that water can't get underneath the court or into, you know, infiltrate over the, you know, drain structures, such as catch bases or channel drains. I think, you know, handling the stormwater so that we're taking all the water from the baseball field, deflecting completely away from the court will give us the best success at this court renovation. But based on that, do want to touch a little bit on the cost analysis we, we prepared. So option one, which was just the repair, the crack to resurface for about $185,000. As I've already noted, that's the cost to do that repair, but I, I wouldn't recommend that because again, I, I think we'd be having the same conversation two years from now to start to take care of the issues that are occurring there. Option two for the full renovations, the business cost of $315,000, something like that. Essentially, that would be pulverizing the asphalt in place, recompacting, putting a new three-inch lift of asphalt, new fencing and repairing the courts in kind. If we did want to look at the option to remove the existing base material and bring new material in, I need to get that cost, we didn't put that in this budget number. So that's something I can certainly do for one of the next meetings, but I don't want to throw that on the regarding what that difference in that cost would be. And then option three, which is the most expensive, would be, I'm sorry, option four would be just a pretty, if there wasn't both, option two is because that's for that fiberglass sheet I talked about that we would recommend. So option number four for the post-tension concrete, that's the premium for the post-tension concrete itself, what's causing the increase in cost. So we're going from $315,000 to about $515,000 for that post-tension concrete. So we bring these, here I said, I think this slide, we can talk a little bit about maintenance. So post-tension concrete, as I know, it has 25-year warranty. There's not a lot of post-tension concrete tennis courts out there that are older than 25 years, which is essentially why they have the 25-year warranty. But based on the technology, again, you know, in the southern port, or portion of the country where, you know, sandy, poor soils, post-tension's been used for decades. You know, essentially, parking garages are post-tensioned concrete. So we know the lifespan should be over 25 years, but since the warranty's 125, that's how we use it as a basis to compare for the longevity of the project. So if we compare post-tension to asphalt concrete, asphalt concrete is about $200,000 less during the initial install. But when we look over the 25 years, the annual and yearly maintenance cost for the asphalt will be in excess of the post-tension for that 25 years. Essentially, we assume from a budgetary standpoint, in year six or seven, you're going to have to start doing some crack repair maybe every two years on the asphalt. And then conservatively, you know, year 10 to 12, we're going to need to repave that because we know it's going to fail on some. So over that 25 years, you're going to repave that tennis court and asphalt probably twice. Versus the post-tension, there's going to be no repavement, no crack repair for the post-tension. And you're going to, you're going to probably resurface both the courts at the same time. So in about three, every three to five, seven years, you're going to repaint whether it's asphalt or concrete. So ultimately, you know, from our, our standpoint, over the longevity, if you look for 25 years, the post-tension is less expensive. However, it, it is a budgetary question. And we have a number of communities that say, you know, so if we have the capital, we can do the post-tension. We don't have to worry about this for 25, 30, 40, 50 years. And then we have other communities that we work with that say, you know, we know we're going to need to, well, this is 12 years, can't, can't spend that capital now. So asphalt's here too. So I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. I mean, really, it just depends on what, what the current budget is for the initial project and then just longevity, you know, what, what those numbers look like from a budgetary standpoint. But from, from our analysis, thinking long-term over 25 years, we do think post-tension gives you the best bang for the cost-wise, even though it's a more expensive effort. But I think if done right, just understanding the maintenance requirements for the asphalt, asphalt's a good answer. Just understanding, you know, over that 25 years, for that duration, it's going to be some repaving that needs to occur.
So for the $315,000 estimate for the asphalt, and I know you don't have the number to scoop out the 18 inches of material in there. Are, are you recommending that we put new drains in and not just maintaining that French drain? So maintain the French drain and put in some more drainage?
I, I think you're probably replacing the French drain with something else.
Okay, and that's not in this number either in 315?
No, it isn't, but we do have, we do have some contingencies that we have.
It's 15,000.
10% with, honestly, the, the, a lot of drainage improvements probably will take up a good portion of that. We can see, so I think as we look at these, though, we're probably going to look at some drainage improvements and add that line item because that, that's going, that's going to increase the cost of the asphalt in the post-tension probably, I think, is.
Post-tension, do we need to, do we need to replace that French drain also?
I, I think so. I think it gives you the best opportunity to not. So if, if the cause of water getting under the surface is because the French drain isn't working appropriately, we would certainly want to do that because even though the post-tension slab is more, it will work better if water sits on it. And we still don't want water getting up into that post-tension to reduce the risk of.
And that, that number's not in the 554,000?
No, so we'll, we'll have to take a look at that, see what that line.
Do we need to scoop out 18 inches of the material underneath of the post-tension?
No.
So that, we don't have to add that?
Yeah, there's a vast state again, as we know, because asphalt, if we were to reclaim the material, we wouldn't see that because the post-tension slab doesn't flex. If there was a little bit of settlement in that existing material, we, we think we would, we would take the post-tension, keep the on material.
So the earthworks and drainage improvements, that doesn't include the French drains?
It does not. Yeah, for the most part, the earthwork is making first, you just like this. Yeah, so the earthwork, so the earthwork disturbance, so, so essentially, in, in the asphalt auction, we're going to pulverize that in place. So we need to have that material peripheral and compact as we have a good level of plain, plain surface so that we can put the asphalt on top. So right now, we, these estimates don't include any information from the possible rates in French drain or drainage work outside of the concrete.
Does someone from the recreation committee want to comment on anything that we haven't discussed yet?
Donna's going to come back to us with the cost for our, for our next meeting to start with, what the base material will cost so that we have a better idea of where we're at with the, based on recommendations and based on the samples, nine samples of the pavement that's lost right now. But I think everybody's saying as far as water, the waters, between the water and the, the base material there, let's break that on. I could understand as far as the drainage, the drainage issue on the side, side of that walkway could be, could be addressed. I mean, it only shows, I think it's only two tiles, two drain tiles on there to capture that whole area of the tennis court, so. There is some groundwork that would be done. I don't, I can't speak for the whole work community right now, but I think some of that work that needs to be done. Try and add renovations back to the process.
There's another hydrodynamic effect that's going on from the east, and that is the water that's coming across is not only stormwater, it's also wastewater because that's our leaching field for the system that is in the, in the Evander tanks. To the, to the north. And we've, we've not successfully discovered where the infringement of, of stormwater may be entering the wastewater system. That could be one reason why it's not operating. The other is that the selector that moves and, and attempts to move the discharge water into right, into, yeah, right field and then center field and then back, that, that selector has not always worked as designed. So there is a possibility that we can discover some method of better control of the water infringement and that may help the, the degree to which the, the tennis courts become saturated in the underlying.
Anyone else?
I can read the slides. Can you do, how much on the weekly?
For the courts themselves? Yeah, so, yeah, so the, the bottom left, which is the renovation of the asphalt courts in kind and the new tennis courts, that's about $159,000 for the court, for the asphalt, and then the post-tension is about $341,000. That's sort of the, the big premium between the two.
So we, we actually pay about $10,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, well, yeah, so in terms of the annual costs. So when we look at, so the, the full renovation asphalt cost, so the middle number, so the, the capital cost is the three hundred fifteen thousand. So let's say we, we go with the asphalt. So annually, we, we, the way we've done this pressure, we, we can do a few different ways. We're basically saying for, for paving, you know, year twelve, year twenty-four, the crack report, repair over that period of time annually, it's a cost of, you know, twenty-one thousand dollars. If you look at the. Perilously, you're probably not doing anything for the first six years. And then, you know, there'll be a little bit of crack repair, you'll resurface, and then there'll be a major, call it year ten or twelve, you're repaving. And, you know, and, and so if this, that cost for the new construction is three hundred fifteen thousand dollars, the repaving to a year's down road is a fraction of that. Uh, still problems somewhere in the middle, maybe a hundred, a hundred fifty something, something in that range. Because when you're repaving, we're hoping the base materials in good shape. You know, hopefully we can keep the fencing in place for the repaving of, of that year twelve. So there, there's some things that we would do during the initial install that you're not doing all over again year twelve.
Jonathan, is that the worst site of a tennis court that you've ever seen?
No, unfortunately.
You've seen worse?
Yeah, and, and it's just, and, and a lot of times it's, it's, it's got to do with, you know, the issues are sore common. Between the three issues, you know, over the last ten years, we've seen worse asphalt where we've seen a trend to go with more post-tension because that was, I think, when you originally did the courts, post-tension wasn't common because it was a lot more expensive. It's become a lot more prevalent now. You know, back, I think I did my first post-tension in two thousand thirteen, it was in the city of Boston. It was a terrible site, settlement, we had to all factor around improvement, so that was the type of site you did it. Now we're doing it in typical projects because just from the maintenance standpoint, the, the quality of asphalt.
What you described is the life cycle that you just described there. Is that the same life cycle if it was on a perfect place to put it?
Yeah.
So say, whether it's a horrible place or a perfect place, you build it up and it's still going to be what you described?
Yeah, because the asphalt's going to fail regardless.
Right.
And that's just the reality. I mean, I'd say twenty or so years ago, we, you know, told clients asphalt will last twenty, twenty-five years. It's just not the case anymore, which is unfortunate. And it's, it's the quality, it's just, it's mostly the quality of the asphalt. I don't think of paving it any differently. It's just the, the asphalt, yeah, it just, it should not last as much.
Well, your, your, your report says the asphalt's hit or miss.
Yeah, it's, you know, and, and it goes all the way forward. We, we do track facilities, we do regular park facilities with walkways, it, it's just all the type of asphalt. It's just selling quick, it's, you know, done as cheap as possible, it's definitely quality is just not, not what it was twenty or so years ago.
Thank you.
Thus far, we like Maple Avenue asphalt, I believe, but that's probably because it's the newest in town. Uh, but I think that is the experience we've had with, with it. Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody need to, yes, Maury?
I was wondering, is there any such thing as a SIP analysis for asphalt? So that you can get a pure grade or whatever you'd say?
Asshole, no, usually you can, it would be so terrible. Asshole, it's, you know, a tough thing is, there's really not a good way to break it down and understand what, what's our, uh, you know, for instance, you know, often when we're doing asphalt courts now, that's how, of course, we do a, a virgin mix. So we're, we're eliminating the rap altogether. There's not really a sample that we take a piece of asphalt and figure out what was the recite of the product and it's, what's, what's it been down for a certain period of time.
All right, next action?
I think the next action is that we're going to wait for the recommendation of uh the recreation committee.
All right. Thank you very much, Jonathan.
Scott.
Help, very helpful. Thanks. And thanks for your adapting to our uh circumstances here with two groups to.
Trial run at six thirty, the.
Good.
The better ones up.
Thanks. The next item of business is the uh approval of minutes of January eighteen.
Motion to approve the minutes as I've written.
Discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, sixth department reports police, building, fire, clerk, assessor and administrator.
Motion to please the department heads reports on file unless someone wants to talk about it or something?
Want to pull one, I just shouldn't be surprised if I can find it.
Would you second it?
I'll second.
Thanks.
Tony, uh, out of Tony's, the R, uh, the Ride Out Little Compton Commons project. Um, I'll just read it quickly. Uh, they continue to work through a managerial plan to perform the work of the commons and neighboring streets as quickly as possible with minimal interruptions and inconvenience. They have asked to perform the work from nine P M to five A M. The plan to come and share it with the town once they have solid plans and ready to advertise their R F P. I just ask Tony if you want to uh speak on that.
Certainly. Uh, the, the reason why they are considering as that being the best option, nine to five is there will be the least amount of interruptions uh with traffic. Uh, and also to avoid folks driving over the asphalt. That's one of their concerns is to accommodate, you know, the traveling through the areas of uh Beijing. So that would minimize the command, get the work, they uh assess the air, the, you know, the town. At the same time, they see a little bit of traffic, which will lead with that sign to uh, issue the, you know, next. And that's, and that's what I process as well, so there would be the least amount of time in town interfere with any of the operations.
Have they said when they're going to start?
No, that's, that's why it says, right, right now, they are finalizing engineering and the plans. And uh, once they're ready to advertise, they'll be coming back, coming to the town. But actually, they're running through, you know, cheer, we should take that.
Just quickly, also what your report, so road paving program. The beta group continues to assess the road survey and do borings on various roads. John Dye Road, John Sisson Townway and Taylor's Lane, Beta will be in attendance the next town council meeting February twenty seconds to share their work so far. And their work is what, what are they going to share with us?
They're going to share the engineering and then uh, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to.
So they're going to tell, they're going to, they're going to share with them?
Tell them what the conditions of the roads are.
Nice.
And uh, how much work it's going to be to the town.
And that timeline to do it. Do you expect that to be?
The timeline for the paving for Ride Out versus?
Not Ride Out, the, the second one, the, the other, the town roads.
Will that be in a different schedule as Ride Out, you mean?
No, I'm thinking about Ride Out.
Okay, so, the questions are.
Do they, they have a timetable for, for the um paintings?
The painting, yes, they do, but we would like to entertain this just about the same time as Ride Out. The reason is we would like to bid it all are at the same time so that the contractors, if we can get them to town and they don't have to mobilize, will be much more inexpensive.
A lot of asphalt.
Yeah, the idea is some of this repair is going to be similar in terms of, of what's needed and mobilizing equipment once and bringing it to town and using it in multiple places is what we're trying to take advantage of. But you're right, there's uh, there's a lot of movement.
Thank you.
And this project, the state project, is, they refer to it as Tiverton Little Compton because it goes all the way from uh, frankly, almost the north end of Tiverton, all the way down into Meeting House Lane and then down south to Commons. So the, the sequence in which it unfolds will also give us to, to see how that uh impacts our, our town business.
I'm sure it'll be perfect.
Well, I'll make all.
No, I mean the time and, and uh, yeah.
Timing, it's never good timing, you know, windowwork pieces.
Sure.
You know, so that's why they try and put work, you know, high table, but accommodate them and at least in truce, you know, with the town businesses.
Motion made and seconded.
Any other uh comments on this?
Yes, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, there's a couple of items there. The community needs assessment. It's also we've signed the agreement with the consultant. Uh, they will be coming to down to me with the word group, uh, to develop the questions for the questionnaire. Uh, and uh, so that we can get that accomplished by May. Um, the tennis courts already, uh, the budget, you've received the binders uh for, to consider a workshop, a work group, and obviously we can do that. Uh, so the council has been, uh, has received the binders. Uh, they had the mitigation plan update. Uh, the reason why I'm stating this one here and Chief, I'm not sure if he's still in the house. But, oh, yes, he is. He's the one that's been chairing that, but I understand that Kim Jacobs, uh, she's the consultant for that group. And uh, she has been reaching out to gather some additional information. Um, so if you've been a recipient of a request to fill out some information regarding the as mitigation planning, now please respond as soon as possible, uh, because they also have a timetable and that. And on site waste water management plan, uh, we met with consultant as well on that. And that plan, obviously, where the outcome of that is that we'll create a plan uh so that communities, uh, so folks, the residents, um, can apply for loans regarding the septic systems. Um, but unless we have on-site waste, wastewater management plan, they're not able to do that. Uh, the other item is uh Rema and FEMA that were in town on Tuesday, January the thirtieth, to assess the damage uh to Salt Shore Beach. And uh, we've put together a, an estimate and that was to be forwarded to uh, to Rema so that they can uh assess the situation in the area as well. Not just in Little Compton, but in the new park.
Can you share that estimate?
Can I share the estimate? The estimate I think was eighty-something. I don't have the exact, because we have two different estimates and the initial one was they looked at it, they says, there's no way you're going to manage this amount, so we had to revise that. And I know there was a new submission, uh, but I'm not, you know, I don't have that on the deal often. But I can assure you it was uh at least a hundred twenty, thirty thousand more than what was the initial, which was fifty-three.
Last for a vote on those in favor of placing these reports on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The next item is old business and appointment of applicants to positions on the Harbor Commission Housing Trust and Planning Board. Because of the nature of coordinating the applicant interviews, that does not happen. I suggest that we defer this to a future meeting. There's, there's probably um good reason it would be the next meeting and that assuming we can schedule those interviews in between, we would, we would make those appointments then. So I would seek a motion to continue current incumbents in their roles in the Harbor Commission Housing Trust and Planning Board. We are able to uh bring uh the majority of the council together in order to conduct these uh positions.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, this is a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second of the old business items is to consider approval of tax exempt status for the Little Compton Game Club per Rhode Island General Law forty-four, three, three. Um, the, the solicitor has produced a draft resolution. I believe you have. It's not distributed in the original material, but it, it should be in your, uh, in what was given to you by the clerk.
Well, now. Actually, uh, the, I'm a, sure.
Yeah, sure.
This is a simple fix to section forty-three dash three dash three to add the Little Compton Game Club to those nonprofit corporations who have that statutory status. Uh, I had originally thought that uh the General Assembly would want us to uh draft the necessary bill. Senator DePalma called and said that so long as this uh resolution is approved, uh, the legislative council will draft the necessary legislation. He asked that uh if the resolution is approved, that it be forwarded to him. He will share it with Representative McGaw. They will make sure it's uh filed in the Senate and in the House uh once the bill is drafted by legislative council.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the resolution and in, in summary, it says precisely what the solicitor has just outlined and uh would be eighty-third or eighty-four such uh exception listed in the uh, in the uh uh state uh general law. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thanks for the work on that. Next item of business is new business. It's a request from the Fire Chief to promote the firefighter, third-class, two probationary firefighters. Jason Tower, effective February tenth, and William Rose, effective February twentieth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Harbor Commission regarding Secana Point. The Harbor Commission, through this, I've asked him to describe the uh, the report.
Thank you. Have you had a chance to read the paper that we wrote? So I know this, the fact this is coming to you. See here, but we, we have been over the course of the year. We've been, how many? Looking at the paper, put it down there. The harbor is inundated with so many more visitors than ever. Um, we have a need to be able to respond also to environmental issue particularly. Oil spills has been a potential issue that, but right now the way that, uh, those manages to the roadways and containment systems are also at the fire station, so our response time, I need to resolve. Like that is, my, part of the guidance that the, the state chooses on to have our management plans is that you have to have all the emergency response kit co-located at, at the harbor sort of already access new spill in that situation today. And then, you know, basic public safety, you get with the huge amount of people that are using that uh area, you know, not only since the dock was rebuilt, the launch ramp was rebuilt, but since COVID and people have, you know, got no appreciation for the outdoors, that beach is always crowded. The Great Order is always crowded, there's a huge number of day trippers, so. And this more will be dollars for uh public safety response. And we also have an issue with the five floor where availability is limited to when the docks are deployed. So we'd like to be able to extend the season for that because we do have calls that we have to defer um that are in the shoulder seats because we don't have the response cable. People that are in me. So in dealing with these issues, we're trying to find, you know, where can we cite the equipment that, that. How do we? Be better on some of these other uh metrics that we've been chasing. And there is an opportunity that's just come up where the face of the question here, the seller is considering giving the town uh the first crack at purchase. And so this to us is a, something that is a, really is a fleeting opportunity. Um, and we, uh, the copper division can see a huge benefit in being able to have a facility there, just one of the things that we addressed in the paper. Um, when we first engaged Chief Petron, it really doubled down on what this opportunity does mean for uh, you know, environment protection as well as public safety. So uh, we see an opportunity here. We are just an advisory board. Um, so uh, I think here tonight is, you know, we worked through uh our liaison, councilman Madal. I mean, it's, yes, let's put this on paper, bring it to the council and basically see the council's support in pursuing this idea. So to me, and we've had a preliminary discussion of the I trust. Did they uh consider the uh, give a purchase or contribution towards this before the town? That conversation uh was productive. It seems like a lot of the benefits of this acquisition are consistent with the, the I trust charter. And so we would like your permission to brief this concept to the full board of the I trust. We've tried to give an application to the I trust from the landowner. If that hasn't embraced the process, that's going to come through. But we have to understand what is the I uncertainty trust's uh assessment of their contribution could be or any balance with. assessment of their contribution could be, or any balance which follow the town. So we would need to be able to structure, what we're recommending is to try to structure the bond. We would brief to the Budget Committee Administrator for inclusion in capital. This past year, the town voted to the Budget Committee's recommendation to right-size the general fund and we, we are advocating just trying to, whatever the town balances, we try to pursue a bond for that. So I would look like for the balance that the Ag Trust would contribute. So we want to brief that, you know, to the Budget Committee, to the Administrator for inclusion in the capital plan. We would need to work with the Solicitor on the avoidance mechanism for the town to have this pickup game acquisition that is subject to order approval at the actual town meeting. We structure that so the seller is confident that the is, you know, doing its best to take this opportunity that's being offered to us. Just wait until FTM for, for that to actually happen. And then working with the clerk's office and, you know, others to structure the the stroke and the warrant, what the language needs to be to convey this idea. Get it ready for voter approval. And then finally, the last thing we'd like to do is work with CRMC. Getting an early opinion on putting the flow there for the rescue boat in front of this property. And we would actually like to retire the septic permit. We think it's just liability waiting for the town. If someone comes into private, develops that lot of septic system there, particularly vulnerable. So offering that in the conversation with CRMC to retire that as we put in the flow to the Harbor Masters and Chief for admission. If we'd like to do that. So again, as an advisory board or what, telling us to see and back to you as we make progress, that's scheduled for. So, yeah.
Questions on, on how to proceed?
Yeah, just is a accurate survey been done of that lot? Like, what exactly?
You have to, not the thought, I don't know, I don't know the date, you know, what's the last true survey of that. I can't into that. But while you talk about one thing that is in everyone's mind too, is however we find this retarded within the town.
Can the
Go ahead.
Well, it's just, I'm just asking, I'm thinking out loud. Can, can the Ag Trust acquire a piece of property and then designate someone to be the caretaker, so to speak?
These are the conversations that we had is the Ag Trust can buy a piece of property, they can have some ownership stake, ownership stake. We need to define what the ownership stake is, what really is the tale? If we're gonna, we're gonna own this property collectively in town, or it's just town property. The chief has a number of fantastic ideas on where money can come in to develop the capability within that site. None of that by properly. So it's either it's a pickup game between the bond and what the Ag Trust can afford. But the details of ownership are part of our work list in fleshing out what does this thing state look like.
Well, it's, it's always been a kind of a pet peeve of mine when they say Ag Trust property. It's actually the town of Little Compton's property, but it's under purview of the Ag Trust. So I don't, I don't see a conflict.
No, it
In this, I'm sorry.
It bears some similarities to the acquisition of the property in the, in Delta at the other end of Oliver Lane.
In, in, in this instance, the ownership of the lot, based on how it's structured, would be with the town. If the Ag Trust makes a contribution to the purchase, that would be in exchange for an easement that they would have. The easement would define what role the Ag Trust would have in the administration of the lot.
So basically, which Ag Trust wouldn't buy it in fee, they'd basically buy the development right.
Exactly right. They'd take a negative easement.
That's the easement, yeah.
So how we allocate, you know, how we allow parking to, to be able to bounce people to this.
Yeah.
To be determined, providing the Ag Trust's board, this is they also want to
So what you would like is a
just motion. Motion to proceed. While the lines are this way, I just highlighted and report back to you as we make progress towards putting together a package that you feel comfortable bringing to voters at the town meeting.
So I might phrase the motion as being a motion that would direct the or it yeah, direct is probably well, to direct the Harbor Commission to continue its efforts to explore the feasibility and the necessary steps for achieving acquisition of this property.
I'll second your motion.
Is there any discussion, any public comment? Yeah.
Can you just give us a general idea of where the property is?
The marble properties.
Where the
It's immediately north of the town dock.
Right. So right next to town dock is a narrow slice of land and it has base there. He's whatever ran down the flow. That's a large building on it right now, much smaller building. Still response to fireworks if we guys don't want to keep out of water. Public access. Part of the town dock, it's right next to the town dock. If that property is, that's our private it's a well that people go water down. So they can't put into that access. There is a septic system down there that's, if you have a balance it's in a thirty pounds place. So that septic system would be subject to serious inundation in these last two storms that we had. We would like to actually to that septic system in the course of the discussion with CRMC. If a private dock was developed behind that, then it would seriously compromise that elevation channel and access to the side of So this whole bunch of liability and definitely that you'd be entitled to properly develop. If I'm, if I'm discussing this last year, that's there aren't, they're not solid. The owner has previously told me about the town and every debt position we have down, but in the bit from, you know, this pickup game of the town.
You ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next.
Thank you. Thanks. I'd like to thank Chief Petron. He has allowed to
Yeah, I, there are many advantages to this for, for fire and rescue. Thank you. The next is a discussion of the prohibition of development at Sappala Marsh. Counselor McHugh asked that we include this, this item, House Bill seventy-sixty in the packet.
Yeah, I have an update on House Bill eight-seventy-sixty. It's introduced by Representative Edwards, Kennedy, Bennett, Portman, and Avney, which is being sent to the municipal government housing committee, which is a fifteen-member committee. I think that we need to work on a resolution opposing this bill. I'm gonna work on it. Hopefully, one of my councils will work on it with me. My understanding is, this is a third shot in the House from these folks. Two of their, their first two attempts never made it out of committee. So I guess they're going for three strikes here. It's been also in the Senate twice, hasn't made it out of committee. So it adversely affects the Bowen Oyster Farm. And I think we should send our resolution to the Speaker of the House, Governor, I'm sorry, Senator DePalma, who also introduced a bill twice in the Senate that never left committee. The Senate Majority Leader and Representative McGaw. I don't know if there's a Bowen out there. I think it might be. It looks to me that this third attempt is strictly a political thing. And they want to block the bones. It's been going on for years now. And I think our representatives, McGaw and DePalma, need to tell our constituents that vote for them here in Little Compton, explain their feelings about this third bill now in the House. So that would be my resolution. I, I think there's a Bowen here. Is there anything you can add? Am I not reading this correctly?
I think you are reading it correctly. House Bill eight-seventy-sixty. As you said, it's the third, the representative that was specifically to block the application that I submitted for almost four years ago. We saw it all, all of the calls and learned that now we're waiting in hearing. And the bill, actually, the title of the bill says, Sappala Management Area Prohibition of Development. It's stated in the development is prohibited anyhow. But it goes on to restrict commercial use, which a good percentage of Sappala Management Area is leased out to terrestrial farmers, that doesn't mean commercial terrestrial farmers, about fifty acres, I believe. But then it goes on to try to include in very confusing language, Sappala Cove, about a hundred acres of Sappala Cove of water, which is under the control of CRMC. So really, it would be adding thirty-three percent more space to this. And it would be potentially restricting any commercial fishing. It's about a hundred acres of Sappala Cove. Our allocation is for less than one acre. But it would potentially restrict commercial fishing. Any other commercial activities, it would want to infer Sappala Management Area little passive recreation. And GEM currently relies on commercial agriculture, leasing land for commercial agriculture as part of their management for their, for their management areas. So I appreciate you bringing this up tonight.
I'll, I'll move the Patrick, work up a resolution and bring it back to the council that we forward in opposition to this. And this is politics and, and words matter, as the solicitor can probably tell you. They're calling it development. It's farming. I'm sorry, it's farming. This is against a type of farming. That's what this is really against.
It's against all farm. They're all commercial farm. On Sappala Management Area, as I said, I picked around fifty acres is presently used for terrestrial commercial farming. So the place of farming is, is falls under the definition farming as well, so.
Agriculture. You'll second it, sir?
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a request from the Administrator and the Assessor for review and approval of a solicitation for statistical reappraisal and revaluation in two thousand and twenty-four. This is a standard request when it's time to conduct such revale and, and
This is for, this is for an RFP?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thanks. The next is discussion of the concept of attainable housing. Attainable housing, counselor?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion and hopefully I'll get a second and we can get into a discussion. So my motion is charge the planning board to report back to the town council with specific zoning changes that encourage attainable housing.
Have you got that?
Say that one more time.
I'm sorry.
Write that for you. Charge, charge the planning board to report back to the town council with specific zoning changes that encourage attainable housing.
Thank you.
This is attainable, not affordable.
Attainable.
Yeah.
I'll second.
The motion is made and seconded to task the planning board with returning with those specific zoning changes they deem necessary to encourage attainable housing.
And I think, and I think the obvious things we're thinking about is, you know, where the water and septic goes, the density. You know, maybe there's a possible new third district. You know, everybody wants to know, you know, we're all clamoring for attainable or community or cluster housing here. Obviously, we have a, a housing issue. You know, not a land issue. So I think it's appropriate that, you know, the planning board look into what we can do with our zoning and come back here to us so we can review it. So hopefully this will be a start of that process.
I may, I'm sure that's how we're saying, but do we have a definition for attainable?
You know, I was going to, I, I, I figured someone was gonna ask me for a definition of attainable housing. Yeah, it's not affordable housing, right? You know, it's for that group that falls above affordable housing in this town. I'm probably not articulate enough to give you a definition, but hopefully you can come back with one for us. And is there anybody else in the audience that can do a better job of defining attainable housing? Love to hear.
The problem with attainable housing, as I see it, is people's kids and family that live in town that make too much, that are not qualified for affordable, need a house, they need a place to stay and they want to stay in town. Well, what's attainable? Attainable is not a house at one point two million dollars. It just isn't. And they're not making that kind of money, but they're making more than the state mandate what affordable is. So they're in that gray area or, or do area where they, they, they make too much money, their income's too much. But they're not, I don't want to use the word poor enough, they're not under the affordable housing limits. So they're in this twilight zone where I can't afford to play a place in Little Compton, but I got the state unbelievably telling me I'm making too much money. So that's what the attain, that's my definition of attainable housing.
Well noted.
Basically, it's, it's housing for those that don't meet the standard in the Rhode Island housing, which is eighty percent of your mean income here in, in Little Compton. So you have your mean income to qualify for state affordable housing. It has to be underneath that eighty percent of that. So essentially what you're looking at is people that are at the medium income or slightly greater. So there could be a definition for attainable housing, just based on Rhode Island housing statistics.
Mr. Locke?
Final question about this. I'm going to propose something that may be in the background. I think the town of Little Compton and its town council should define attainable housing for this. I think the best thing we can do is account for us as a community and specifically the town council to define what it is. And it's exactly what Counselor Golombeski said. Counselor Dolomest, he said, it's for those people who make more than the state requires. But right now, zoning, the zoning for affordable housing encourages affordable housing in this town. It does not encourage attainable housing. And I think the best thing that could happen in this town would be for the town citizens and specifically the town council to define what attainable housing is. I would view it as Little Compton affordable housing. Something for this that fits what's best for this town. And I think that Patrick's motion to start a process by bringing it back to the planning board is a terrific idea.
Thank you.
And I would encourage it. All heard.
Thanks for expanding the aperture a bit and we'll prepare ourselves to deal with the planning board's response by getting started ourselves. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next is to set a date for the budget workshop.
May take a while.
This may take a while?
Take a while.
Oh, why is that?
I don't know.
Well, I was going to suggest that it would be a week from today. And suggest that we could do it at some time other than at night, if you wish.
Okay.
Want to do it?
When's your?
I won't be here.
You won't be here.
Fifteenth. That's a week from today.
Yeah, but I I I knew of your your plan, but I didn't incorporate it into my my suggestion. When do you want to do it?
Anytime you want.
With you here, I mean.
Yeah, it'll have to be after the fifteenth.
We'll go with what we can, I want to I'll only have two counselors and potentially a third.
I mean I, I mean, what I would suggest is to just, we need to move the budget to the budget committee by
Mark first, yeah.
Right, so with having it set, you have to maintain something prior to
Yep.
for competition. So that was the goal, was just trying to get it done prior to the next meeting so that you could make up make this, you know, take a vote.
Does the twenty-second make sense? I know there's other things on the calendar that day.
Right. We could, we can move that. We can move the other things.
People. I forget what they were.
Interviews.
Right.
A point.
That that won't take long.
On the twenty-second, you have two public hearings.
Public hearings, right?
Yeah, so that'll be, that'll be, that'll be, I'm talking before the meeting.
Right.
I'm in favor of doing it all in one day, but.
What's your status on the twenty-second?
Oh, we'll see.
Well, half a knee.
Half a knee, we'll see.
Okay. I'll revise my suggestion then. Let's do something similar and scheduled to what we did this evening, and that is before the meeting at which there are two public hearings. We would have a budget workshop.
I'm available nineteenth, twenty, twenty-first, three days before the twenty-second.
I'll do twenty-one.
All right. Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Budget workshop.
Those it takes a while.
So be it.
Twenty-first it is?
I move that we set a a budget workshop on Wednesday, the twenty-first at what'd you say, afternoon is okay?
Sixth.
Late afternoon, if you're going to do an afternoon, sir.
Six.
Seventeenth, five o'clock?
Five.
Six?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, six o'clock on Wednesday, the twenty-first for a budget workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next is a request that we consider adoption of a resolution in support of the League of Cities and Towns twenty twenty-four legislative priorities. They are not surprising. They are the kinds of things that seek permission rather than direction. They seek not one size fits all, but flexibility. It's those kinds of things that are in the resolution.
I'll make your motion.
I'll move second.
Motion is made and seconded to
Pass this resolution.
Pass a resolution that supports the League's legislative priorities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Next is a request from Amy Mooney, the Director of the Community Center for the Council, to consider adding budget funding to be used for the senior meal program.
I'll move that. I'll move that.
Move that to the budget folder for the budget meeting?
Yeah, let's move it over there.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sitting as the Board of License Commissioners, a request from the world's shortest St. Patty's Day parade.
And it's still the shortest.
Well.
By nine feet. I've been saw has one in a, that's like ten feet longer than ours.
Nine. I'll move this.
This should not confuse what this particular request is. It's for a liquor license.
I'll move it.
The Class F one-day retail beverage license on March seventeen.
Guinness, Guinness on the seventeen, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And then as if by the construction of this agenda by the clerk. She moved quickly to the next item, which is communication. It's an invitation to counselors, at least those with knees, to march in the world's shortest St. Patty's Day parade being held on March seventeen. Is there a motion to
I'll move that.
Attitude and place this invitation on file?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A request from Leslie Fox to consider placing signs at Veterans Field and Hayes Field, citing the town's ordinance requiring dogs to be leased. I would suggest to you that you, that we move to refer this to the town administrator for such a sign, and I will assist in that.
Second.
I might, we're in discussion here. I'll probably maybe recommend it to the recreation committee. Where their recommendation of the size of the sign, where the sign goes, the sign says. Just a thought.
Fine. After, after soliciting the input of the recreation committee as to size, illumination.
Location.
I didn't say that.
implication. I think she's also talking about the dog remains also that they leave on the ground.
Dog remains are addressed by a sign on one of the, just have in mind for this sign, yes. Is there then any further modification to motion?
Excuse me, are you referring it to the rec committee and the town administrator?
Well.
Or the rec committee first?
We're in discussion about it right now, so.
The committee make a recommendation to the town administrator.
You want to redo your motions?
Redo my motion.
And I second it.
Discussion. All in favor of that revised motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent file.
Motion to place consent file on consent calendar on file. You got it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There being no further matter before the council, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attention.
Hello, my motion. What did you pass that to another?
What did I?